All rise, call the meeting of the Hammond Common Council to order for Monday, May 10, 2021. All rise for the pledge. Councilwoman Alexander.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, as I continue to continue to pray for our city, Lord God, Lord God, I'm just asking, Lord God, that you continue to strengthen us, Lord God, that you continue to unify us, Lord God. Lord God, I'm just asking a special prayer over our medical teams, Lord God. Lord God, as we continue to fight COVID-19, Lord God, continue to cover our children as they are in school and getting ready to end this school year, Lord God, and prepare for the summer, Lord God, and go off into their different ways, Lord. Lord God, as we continue to go on through these struggles, Lord, we just ask that you strengthen us, keep us, and protect us. And, Lord, continue to protect our residents, in Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warpo.
Here. Let the record show, nine present, zero absent, five by, or five in person, four by Zoom. Mayor's out of town, he's asked if the council would allow his chief of staff, Phil Talon, to speak, so Phil.
Thank you Chairman Warpo, and good evening to all the council and everyone present here today and at their homes. Yes, Mayor is out of town and obviously wanted to, as he typically does, still update everybody on some events that are happening today. Bear with me, I did bring some notes, there are quite a few, but I'll try and go through as quickly as possible. Real quick, I know Mayor mentioned it previously, the mask mandate is still in effect for the City of Hammond until May 31st by executive order. That includes all buildings, including Lost Marsh Clubhouse, Sportsplex, Gene Shepherd Center, et cetera, of course, City Hall. So that is still in effect till May 31st, just wanted to remind everybody. I'm happy to report that the Water Department credit card fees are now completely being absorbed by Water, Sanitary, and the city. Residents will no longer have to pay any fee if they pay their credit card, or pay their bills using their credit card. I want to thank Councilman Mark for bringing that to our attention, and also thank the Water Department staff and Sanitary staff that worked diligently to get us to a solution that's going to be happy for all of our residents and for the council people that were representing people that were concerned about those fees. So they are no longer going to be charged a fee. In regards to the water rates settlement negotiation, we believe Mayor will have an ordinance in front of you at your next meeting, which I believe is May 24th. Some of the customer communities that we've been working with, and I know you guys have had several discussions with Mayor on this, had some concerns with some of the language that we put in, specifically from the Hammond side, we really wanted to protect ourselves from contracts that we have with other customers, and we feel like we have that resolved now. So coming up on the 24th, the Mayor will submit to everybody the resolution agreement, and you'll be able to ask questions and work through that process. But I know it's been, it's taken some time, but this is a really important negotiation, and we got to make sure that we're, you know, protecting the city for all future issues and concerns with this process. So you'll see that on the 24th. Over the past couple of years, the Mayor's office was getting sporadic complaints about neighborhood traffic issues in the Kenwood area. So through that process, Mayor Tom, working with Councilman Tyler, had decided to use a similar process that we've used in other parts of the city, including Boy Scout Road and on 175th Street that most of you are aware of, where we're going to put up temporary closures in a neighborhood, and then we're going to send out surveys to the residents in that area. In this specific situation, it happens to be about 250 homes, and then after they, the closures are up for about a week, they will report back to us whether they think this resolved some of the traffic issues in that neighborhood, or whether it didn't. We've gone through this process several times, and in both instances, I don't think any changes were eventually made because the residents weren't overwhelmingly in support. As you know, if it's a 50/50 kind of response, no changes will be made because we really want to see one side over the other approving or saying they don't support. In this situation, we're talking about 165th Street to the south, State Line to the west, Highland Street to the north, and Holman Avenue to the east. So that's the boundaries. I brought with me a copy of the survey, and I'll be happy to hand it out to all the council people, just in case you get a question. I know this is only in Councilman Tyler's district, and obviously the council at large, but I'll have a copy for everybody, just in case you want to take a look. It shows where the road closures are going to be placed. They're actually going to go up tomorrow morning, starting at 6:00 a.m. in that area, and there will be a sign placed on all the road closures facing inward, towards the neighborhood, saying that this is a temporary closure, and that the surveys that are going to be sent out need to be returned or responded to by June 1st. You can either mail them in, or if people choose, they can also respond online. So we're trying to make that as easy as we can. It'll be one response per household. So we look forward to getting those results, and Mayor obviously will report to everybody. I know Councilman Tyler is going to reference this a little later in today's meeting. As most of you are aware, our administration was extremely disappointed to hear that Franciscan Alliance will be downsizing their facility in downtown Hammond and eliminating many departments, including their OB department, ICU, surgery rooms, et cetera. Even more disappointing is the fact that the leaders of Franciscan Alliance reached out to us an hour before they were going to make the announcement. We never got an opportunity to sit down with them and have a conversation to see if we can help resolve the issues, never got a chance to hear the issues at all to this minute. I couldn't tell you exactly, or Mayor Tom, if he was here, wouldn't be able to tell you exactly what the issue is, because we still haven't had that conversation. We're obviously extremely disappointed, as I know many of you are. You know, I was born at St. Margaret's in Hammond, I would imagine a lot of people in this area were as well. And also, as you know, healthcare isn't a privilege, it's a right. And from an administration perspective, we believe that having healthcare in a near vicinity for your residents is critical. So this is extremely disappointing. However, we are already in conversations with several medical groups about filling some of the gaps that will be created through this. And also, many of you know that we're very far along in working with Jeff Speck and his plan for downtown, and, you know, with the Westlake Corridor train project, which is the billion-dollar train project that is going to be having a couple stops in Hammond and potentially a stop right in the heart of downtown Hammond. We are still working on several projects and developments that we think will be successful in downtown, and hopefully will be working together with all of you to make a lot of those projects still occur. But I think we needed to mention what had happened and what's going on with the hospital, so I just wanted to bring that up. The Gaming Advisory Board has completed the approvals for this year's grants. All in all, we were able to grant almost $310,000 to organizations that are either in Hammond or serve Hammond. And I really want to thank all the council appointees, as well as all the mayor role appointees. There were 11 of us all together, I chaired the board, and, you know, I was concerned that with limited funds this year because of COVID, that we might have a lot of folks kind of upset about the amount of money they were going to get. And throughout the entire process, we all worked together, understanding that funds were limited, and we were able to give majority of the grant applicants a certain amount. And so we're excited that that process worked the way it did. If all goes well, by this time next year, when we have the same process, we should have the normal amount of funds for the Gaming Advisory Board, which is usually typically somewhere between 600 and 650,000. Obviously, that's dependent on a lot of things happening, and we're still working through COVID, so there's no guarantees, but that's where hopefully we'll be at this time next year. One quick note on the flag issue, which I know we've all heard about at this point. Mayor did sit down with the owner of the gentleman that was flying the flag that had what I'd consider very inappropriate content, specifically across from a park. The owner of that property has told the Mayor that he will not fly the flag any longer, and obviously this is good news for Hammond, and specifically people that use that park, and even more specifically for the children that go to that park that have no business seeing or reading that word in any way, shape, or form. So the good news, I guess, after everything that's happened, is that the flag should no longer be flying, at least per the resident. Two final things, actually three final things, quick. I want to thank Awana Miller and her team, and all the pastors and ministers and religious leaders that worked together to put on another successful prayer breakfast that we had last week. We've heard nothing but overwhelmingly positive information from that event. Always a great, fun, uplifting event for the City of Hammond. So thank everybody that was part of that, that helped put that on, and everybody here that participated as well. It was another successful event. The Hard Rock Casino will be opening on May 14th, I know Mayor reported that to all of you. Since that, the last time he reported you on this, the Majestic Star is now closed. So we have basically three casinos in this very, this area right here, which is Ameristar, Hard Rock, and obviously the Horseshoe. We're looking forward to getting numbers in July to see how the new casino opening will affect us. I know Mayor will be coming to the council and giving you the updated numbers, so we know exactly how it affected us. Obviously, you would assume early on they're going to have, you know, be pretty successful, since it'll be the new shiny toy in town, if you will, but we'll be reporting to you along the way, so that you are not surprised if our numbers go dramatically down, or just a small percentage down, or if we're just as successful as we have been in the past. And lastly, I didn't write this one down, but I want to thank Representative Mike Andrade for putting together the vaccination event that he had, I believe it was this past Saturday, at the Pavilion in Hammond. I know they had over 100 people respond that were vaccinated. It was open to everybody, but I know they were specifically targeting the Hispanic population, because sometimes with the language difference, you know, there's some lost-in-translation stuff, so some people don't come out, but because of this event, many more people are vaccinated. They worked very hard on this event. A lot of City of Hammond people worked together, Representative Andrade and his team, to make this event possible, and I just want to thank everybody involved. That's all I have.
Phil, just for clarification, when you brought up the mask mandate, that's for city buildings, correct?
That's correct.
It doesn't pertain to private businesses and all that, right?
It does not pertain to private businesses. In fact, if you're experiencing, like I am, a lot of businesses have already removed the mandate for their customers. It seems like a lot of the employees are still wearing masks, they're choosing to do that, or they're asking that their employees do that. But you are correct, businesses make their own decisions on what they're going to require as far as mask mandates, but in Indiana, at this point, it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. But obviously, for Mayor Tom, he's requiring that in all city buildings, you still wear the mask.
And one other question was asked, and that's either for Attorney Berger or yourself. Do you know, does the governor's mandate for the Zoom meetings extend till the end of the year, or is it the end of this month?
Last I heard, and I would, I don't know if Attorney Berger is aware, and I don't have the specific information, last I heard, though, they had extended the Zoom meeting protocol going forward. I didn't know if it was through the end of this month, or through the end of this year. We could follow up on that.
Yeah, a question was just asked, if at the end of the month, the Zoom mandate goes away, and the council people have to all be in chambers, that's why I asked.
I don't think that's the case, but let me follow up on that and get you a clear answer, so you know 100%.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Talon?
I do.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Um, Phil, can you just give a little bit more clarity on, is it also the online fees with the water as well, with the credit card payment?
That is correct, Councilwoman Alexander. So anybody using a credit card, and specifically online, they will no longer get charged that minimal fee, whatever it was. Whether they come to the actual Water Department on Columbia, or use it online, they will not be charged that fee.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I wonder if Phil can give us an update on the Cargill noise issue in the Robertsdale area of Hammond.
Will be happy to, Councilman Kalwinski. So I believe it was last week, we had a complaint to the Mayor's office that the noise was occurring again. We sent our, I don't know what you want to call them, our noise crew, over to the location, and this is one of the first times where our team specifically said, not only could they hear the noise, that it was annoying, it did kind of get deep in your eardrum, if you will, and that they were in somebody's house, or nearby somebody's house, and they were, actually, you could see the house kind of was, I don't want to say buzzing or vibrating, but it was having an effect on the home as well. We reached out to the Cargill plant manager, his name is Adam Lawson. We told him that, you know, we've had our team there, and they're experiencing this. He did bring reference to a blower that was being started up, and that that was the issue. And I had mentioned to him that, in the past, he had said that he didn't know what the noise was, for sure, and I mentioned that to him. And what he said is, no, I think they realized that this blower is part of the issue, but what he was making, he wanted to make clear to everybody, is that there have been complaints about noises in that area, and at the time of those complaints, the blower was not running. So therefore, he did not know what the noise issue was. So we know, now we know specifically, there is one piece of equipment, the blower, Councilman Kalwinski, that is affecting that neighborhood. We very politely asked Cargill to replace that piece of equipment. They said it's going to be approximately a $20 million price tag, and we still very politely asked them to replace that piece of equipment. Last conversation, formal conversation we have with them, they are planning on doing a noise study, so they have more specific information as far as when the noise is affecting the community the most, and so it'll help them come up with a resolution for it. So I would say, we still are in that period, waiting for them to put together additional information to resolve the issue. But I guess the latest update is, our team did hear it. It is loud and annoying in certain situations, and they are on notice that the city is expecting them to resolve the issue, one way or the other.
That's great news. Do you happen to know if they gave, or we gave, a timeline on by when the noise study should happen, and the results shared?
The last conversation I had with them, Councilman, you were actually there at that meeting, so no, at that time, he said he would have a noise study, but let me follow up on that as well, and I will make sure we provide that to yourself and any other council members that are interested in that information.
And I'm guessing there's no action plan until the noise study occurs and results are given?
Yeah, I'd say that's fair.
How you understand it?
Say that last part again, Councilman Kalwinski.
I assume that the noise study has to happen first, and the results shared before they go with an action plan on how to resolve the issue, is that correct?
That is correct. I think when you're asking a company to take on a $20 million investment into a piece of equipment, I think it's fair to give them a certain amount of time to make sure that they are truly addressing the issue that some residents in Robertsdale are experiencing. So, but, saying that, and I would think, Councilman Kalwinski, you should be part of that, as we're working together with them, but I think it's fair to ask them for an updated timeline, as far as when things are going to happen, so that we can share that with our residents, and they're comfortable knowing that we are working towards a solution to the problem.
Thank you. I guess it's fortunate for us, maybe not for them, that they're a billion-dollar international corporation, and they have the funds, although it might be difficult to secure them rapidly, but they do have a great deal of assets across the globe. So I'll look forward to updates on that. Thank you.
Certainly a fine line between, obviously, we want successful businesses in the city that employ a lot of people, so there's a fine line here. We obviously support Cargill's operation and want them to be successful. However, we first and foremost have to protect our residents from issues and things of this nature. So I think it is a fine line, but we'll work our way through this.
Goes without saying. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Um, I just wanted to go back and piggyback on the Cargill issue. I did take a ride out there myself, and it was about 9:51 at night that this noise also happened, so that we can also put some kind of time range on it. I did take a listen myself. I drove out there, I sat, I waited, I heard it, I drove a couple more blocks up. So I did want to also confirm that it is something coming from there.
When there was one complaint, I drove up there and I couldn't hear anything. So it was, it's, I think it's dependent on what part of the neighborhood you're in, when they're apparently starting up this blower, that they know is one of the issues. So it's definitely, this is definitely a tough issue, but it's good to hear that. Councilwoman Alexander, know that you heard it as well, and again, several of our team members heard it, so we know there is an issue.
And I can give you the exact location. I was right at Forsite Park, the homes right there, and then continued to drive towards Calumet Avenue.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman at large, for your dedication to the First District. Much appreciated.
No problem.
Does anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Talon? Does anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Talon? Going three times. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Council.
Item number three, the Common Council Scholarship drawing, and Councilwoman Vines, you had some news on that or something?
Uh, yes. Ms. Yanders was here. She ran back to the office to get the names, so we can draw the names for the scholarships. So, Mr. President, I move that we move this item further along in the agenda when Ms. Yanders is able to return.
Motion's been made. You want to move it to new and unfinished?
That would be a good idea, thank you.
Motion's been made to move the Common Council Scholarship drawing to new and unfinished business on the agendas, by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Do we need a roll call, or is it all, just all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, the reading of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Commotion to accept the minutes from April 26, 2021, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes and placed on file by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move we pay claims, beginning dated 4/30/2021, and ending with claims dated 5/5/2021. Claim 1990 through claim 2189 inclusive, the amount of $9,544,641.19.
Motion's been made to accept the claims as written, by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make a motion to amend claim number 2184 for Brian Mishka and attorneys Isaacs and Isaacs being paid out of self-insurance fund, insurance, in the amount of $95,000. Request that we amend the name of the claimant from Brian Mishka and attorney Isaacs and Isaacs to Icorne and Icorne LLP Trust account.
Second.
The motion on the amendment of claim 2184 has been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos, and then I'll get to you, Councilman Kalwinski.
The incorrect claimant name was listed on the claim. Actually, the correct place to go is the Icorne and Icorne LLP Trust account. It's not an additional, it's just claim number 2184 needed to be adjusted to the correct name.
Thank you. Councilman Kalwinski.
Thank you. Do we know what that $95,000 was related to, which, a certain work? Was it water, was it something else? Just curious what the fees were, or were they just random, and the amount up to $95,000, or was it for one or two certain pieces of legislation?
Councilman Rakos.
Yes, the claim is for a legal settlement, and we really can't get any more into it than, it wasn't legal settlement, and it's going to the, to this other attorney.
So it's for a legal settlement, and it was written, just, we're just changing the name of who it's being?
Changing the name of the claimant, that's all. It's a legal.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Kalwinski?
Ah, a little. I'll pursue it another, somewhere else. That's okay, thanks.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick will call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed to the amendment. Now, the claim is amended. Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, claims as amended passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance 21-13 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 246, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department. Item B, ordinance 2117 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of Home Investment Partnerships Program, and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditures for American Rescue Plan, the Home ARP.
Does anyone wish to speak on these two issues in the public hearing? Does anyone wish to speak on these two issues? Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing done, public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, as, as Phil Talon mentioned during his remarks, we are submitting a survey for residents over in the Kenwood neighborhood, so they can fill out their thoughts, or share their thoughts on the potential roll closures. I would like to just put a copy of this on file with the minutes for tonight's meetings. I've already shared it with Liz and Carmen, so I'd just like to place a copy of that on file. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else under new and? Thank you. Is there anything else under new and, I'm sorry, under communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Like to announce that the HE3 has got their annual, or semi-annual, join us for the Hesfield Cleanup, May 22 at 9:00 a.m. We're going to meet at Freddie Steakhouse. All residents, students, and businesses are invited to participate. They will meet at Freddie Steakhouse on Kennedy. A snack and light breakfast and lunch will be provided for volunteers, and there are also volunteer forums will be available at the event. It goes from 9:00 a.m. till noon on Saturday, May 22.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has anything under communications? Anybody else have anything under communications? Hearing none. Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Councilor Hall's bringing out 2113 and 2117.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I have the announcement on the Capitol Improvements Board. Our last meeting was May 3. We approved $7,300 for flagging fees for the Sibley Resurfacing Project. The next meeting will be May 17. Now, the Community and Crime Watch. Coming up this Thursday, May 13, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch is going to meet at the Whiting Mascot Hall of Fame. That's at 1851 Front Street, beginning at 6:30 p.m. On June 9, Mount Zion Community Watch will meet at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza. That will be at 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon, June 9. On June 17, the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet at 6:30 p.m. at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of 173rd and Holman. The next meeting of Irving Community Watch will be in September, and Edison Community Watch will be in September as well. As I find out about some of the other Crime Watch meetings, I will certainly make those announcements. And as usual, if you see something that just does not seem right, please call 911, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vanez. Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Are there any other committee reports? Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 21-13 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance creating a new fund, number 246, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2021.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Look for final passage of 2113.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 2113 by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
This ordinance comes before us every year. It's to stop armed violation enforcement. Grant amount of $30,800. The police will be targeting the stop armed violations and unsafe driving around school buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on 2113? Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. 2113 passes.
Ordinance 21-17 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the Home Investment Partnerships Program and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditures for the American Rescue Plan, Home-ARP.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Look for final passage of 21-17.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of 21-17 by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, 2117 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances. There are none. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 21R-18 sponsored by Councilman Rakos. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for a 2021 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Grant, grant number 21.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
I move to approve 21R-18.
Second.
Motion's been made for approval of 21R-18 by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
This grant does not require any matching funds in the part of Hammond, and the amount of the grant is $29,717. It comes through the Firehouse Subs Foundation, and allowable uses for this grant is to provide lifesaving equipment and prevention ed education tools to first responders and public safety organizations.
Thank you. Is there any further discussions? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, 21R-18 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, new and unfinished biz, I'm sorry. Item number 12, new and unfinished business.
Item A.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ordinance 21-18, a petition of Adrian Palau for variance of use from zoning ordinance to operate a tattoo parlor in a C3 Central Business District located at 57 Russell Street within the city of Hammond Lake County, Indiana.
This is for BZA approval. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and let, go ahead.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
I move for passage of petition 2118.
Do you want to hear from the business owner?
Yes, and then we'll suspend the rules.
Okay, so there's been a motion made for final passage of BZA?
2118.
Z, I'm sorry.
2118.
2108.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Torres, Councilman Torres.
I move for suspension of the rules to allow Mr. Pellet, common scholars about a tattoo.
The motion's been made for suspension of the rules to allow the owner of the building to speak?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, the rules have been suspended. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Sir, did you want to step to the microphone again? We got the business owner and the building owner, correct?
Yes.
Sir, you want to, he was, he wasn't here in caucus when you gave your lead a presentation. You want to give him a, Councilman Torres, a little bit of a background on it?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. My wife and I own the building at, on Russell Street. We have two office buildings in downtown Hammond. And Adrian came to us about leasing the space. He did the complete build-out at his own expense, really a great improvement. He has paid his rent every month on time. We've met with him and his wife and his children in his home. He's a, he's an upstanding citizen. He's going to make a contribution to downtown Hammond, and we support him. The, there's not much more I can say, except this young man deserves an opportunity, and Hammond is going to grow. The, I think he deserves our support, and we will definitely give it to him. So any questions you might have, I'll be glad to.
Yes, for Mr. Pellet. How many, this is just a tattoo parlor?
Excuse me?
What kind of business is it? A tattoo parlor?
Yes, sir. Tattoo parlor.
How many employees you're?
It's just me right now. But I am looking to hire other employees, yes.
Okay, so you're just getting started?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mr. Novak, this has been passed by the BZA, and it's just approval tonight by us.
Yes, the BZA, well, the BZA voted unanimously to offer with a favorable recommendation to the council. So you guys are just voting, you know, up and down to affirm.
Does anybody else have any questions? I do.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kowinski.
Curious, how large do you want to grow this? How many staff do you think you'll want to pursue to do this work?
Do you say that again?
How many employees do you hope to reach? Are you just going to stay a one-man business? Or are you going to have more people doing tattooing?
Yes, I'm hoping to have a maximum, including myself, of four people. I will be offering tattooing, like permanent makeup, and like microblading and stuff like that. But I would say no more than four employees, including myself, total.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I have a question for Councilman Hammond, who's out in the audience, or Mr. Burgett. Mr., the next item, BZA approval, he's on Zoom too. Do we unsuspend the rules and do the roll call vote, and then suspend the rules again? Yes? Okay, so is there any further discussion or any further questions for these guys here? I'll entertain a motion to go back to regular order of business.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by?
Second.
Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, Clerk Golick.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed, to going back to the regular order of business. The motion's been made for BZA appro, or to approve the BZA Z2108, or reference number 2118 by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
Since this is just a petition, and I know that they already passed the grueling test of the BCA, that's, even though I wasn't aware of this, and it's usually out of courtesy you inform the district councilman, but I kind of been under the weather, so I haven't been up to speed. So that's why, and I'm looking forward for additional businesses anywhere in the district and anywhere in the city, actually. So that's why I'm gonna encourage my colleagues to go ahead and approve this petition for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick will call on reference number 2118.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. The BZ recommendation, BZA recommendation Z2108 has passed.
Item B, reference number 2119, BZA Z21-10, a petition of 1933 Garage LC for a variance of use from zoning ordinance to allow the operation of an auto repair shop in a C3 Central Business District located at 475 Fayette Street within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
I move for final passage of petition 2119.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage of reference number 2119 by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. So Mr. Ferent... Ferentela can speak, and so can Mr. Novak.
So moved.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Torres. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Although, I mean, Clerk Golick will call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warpo?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. The rules are suspended. Mr. Ferentela, you're on Zoom.
I am. Thank you. The information in front of you explains that this will be an auto repair shop. What's not printed in front of you is this is going to be a very different kind of auto repair shop. It's going to concentrate on classic cars. As a result, I expect this business to be very attractive, very clean, very well-run. It's not going to be a dirty repair shop. What I expect is it's going to be the kind of business that draws people from a very broad cross-section. It doesn't make any difference where you live, what your income level is, or whether or not you even own a classic car. What I want is a place where people can gather and exchange ideas. I'm doing this because I think that, one, classic cars are fun. But, two, when I hear the horror stories of what happens when others get their cars restored and they're at the mercy of somebody who tears it apart and leaves a bunch of parts there, and you have no choice but to pay whatever he asks. Well, I believe that Northwest Indiana has some of the finest mechanical mines around, and that if we get a bunch of people together, we can figure out how to accomplish just about anything under just about any budget. I'm not a stranger to Hammond. For 28 years, I worked full-time. I was the president of the Engineered Companies. Engineered was the contractor that built the final base of Lost Marsh Golf Course, the Hammond Bird Sanctuary, the infrastructure for the Millennium subdivision, foundations for both bases of the casino. We made arrangements for donation from much of the fire department's combined space training center. We made arrangements for donation from much of the fire department's combined space training center. Hammond's the place I care about. I had an offer to sell this building several years ago to a, it would become a contractor's yard. I felt that, well, we turned it down because at the time we were doing a business wind-down and couldn't do it quickly enough. But more than that, I felt that there was a much better use. And as a result, I'm willing to take the risk and develop that better use. There's a half acre of vacant land across the street that's going to be used for parking. It's a great building. When it was purchased by us in 2013, it was for Engineered's equipment and repair facility and material storage. The building frankly was a mess. We abated the asbestos, we made it structurally sound, we stripped away all of the unattractive additions that were made to it. My concentration is to make this building as original as possible and as interesting as possible. That's just, that's a snapshot view. If there are any particular questions you have, I'd love to answer them.
Mr. Novak, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, well, you know, the building was built in 1933 as the Shaver Pontiac Annex. It was used as a Firestone Tire Center, you know, prior to this, just a decade ago. So it does have a past history for this kind of use. And the BZA did vote unanimously to give a favorable recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions for either Mr. Ferentella or Mr. Novak?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I believe I talked to Mr. Ferentella about a year ago. You talked to me and you told me you're putting this idea together and it's, well, I told you the first step, of course, will be through, go through BCA. And if you can get through to them, then you're probably on your way, so. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, you have a great memory.
All right.
Just as a point of reference, it's, used to be the tire, or the Firestone store?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Is that by 18th Street there?
Yes, it's right next, well, it's a couple buildings down from Sourno Distillery and 18th and all that, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, in fact, yeah, it's next door to a new 18th Street building too that they're working on, yes.
Is there anybody else that has any questions for either?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Just out of curiosity to Mr. Ferentella, I believe, how far do you go back? Do you go back to the Model T?
My objective is to go back to anything that somebody has an interest in restoring and being able to do that restoration under that person's terms. So I'd be happy to, I'd love to go back to the Model T. One of the reasons why I think this is going to be an interesting project, I'd also love to offer the facility to car collector clubs in the evening and just draw foot traffic and some interesting car traffic or to have Saturday morning coffee and cars. So yeah, if you have a Model T, I'd love to see it there, even if it's just a visit.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Anybody else have any further questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to go back to the regular order of business.
So move.
Okay.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Torres to return to the regular order of business. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed, to going back to the regular order of business. Now for 21, a reference number 2119, BZA document number 2110. Motion was made, I'm sorry, what was that?
2119.
Yeah, reference number 2119, I'm sorry. Motion was made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson for approval of the BZA petition. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I think this sounds like a wonderful program and I thank him for, thank Mr. Ferentella for bringing that kind of business to downtown Hammond. Thank you very much.
I agree with you and maybe he can work on junk cars one day and I can get some of my cars fixed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed to approving both these, or approving BZA petition 2110, reference number 2119. And I want to welcome both businesses to Hammond.
President Whorple, that concludes new and unfinished business, items A and B.
Thank you.
President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, at this time, I would like to revisit item number three, the Common Council Scholarship drawing. And if you don't mind, I'll assist Ms. Yenders and Liz so we can get this, this done this evening. Just for the record, the Hammond City Council annually offers 15 $1,000 scholarships. Bishop Knoll had 42 applicants. Hast had 53. Clark had 177. Gavitt had 143. Hammond High had 192. And Morton had 233, for a total of 840 seniors who applied for these scholarships. Based on the enrollment at each of the schools, Bishop Knoll will receive one scholarship. Hast will receive one scholarship. Clark will receive three scholarships. Gavitt, three. Hammond High, three. And Morton, four, for a total of 15 scholarships.
Thank you.
If any councilman would like to come to the podium and draw names, feel free, but I'm going to assist Ms. Yenders.
Just as a point of clarification, it's, the numbers you gave, those were for the amount of seniors they had, correct? The amount of actual?
Who applied.
Yeah, actually.
Right.
There was nine at Bishop Knoll that applied?
Not applied.
Yes.
Three at Hast?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes. I misread.
Yeah, there was nine at Bishop, I'm not trying to correct you, I just went for the record.
Yes.
So the applications, there were nine by score, these are by score. Bishop Knoll had nine, Hast had three, Clark had six, Gavitt had four. Hammond High had 17 and Morton had 21, for a total of 60 students that applied for these.
Yes, that's.
Scholarships, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go right down in order like we do?
So, good evening, introduce myself, I'm Dr. Leslie Anders. I'm the Executive Director of Secondary Education for the School City of Hammond. It's nice to be here with you all tonight, Councilman President Whorple. And this is also an emotional time too for us, for the School City of Hammond. As you all know, we're consolidating down to two high schools. So for some of our schools, Gavitt, Clark, and Hammond High, this will be the last time the names will be pulled for the seniors for the class of 2021. However, we know that you all are going to continue to support our students when we go down to Hammond Central and Morton High School, so thank you.
Alrighty, so we have, let me get my glasses here. One scholarship available for Bishop Knoll. Is there a councilman who would like to draw the name for Bishop Knoll? Aden Companion. So that goes in.
Can you, was it David you said?
I mean, she didn't give me the other envelopes.
Oh, okay.
Then there's an alternate, correct?
It has his name, so. So let's go to Hast.
Okay. Hast has one.
Councilwoman, there's no alternates this year?
Pardon me?
There's no alternates this year?
No alternates, we should have one alternate.
We can pick out of the envelope, we can pick out of the envelope.
Okay, so we'll take one out of there. I apologize for seeing, seeming a little bit discombobulated this evening. Last year, Terri Myrick, and in years past, Terri Myrick always did it. And she was so organized, she retired. She's got a lot of nerve.
So the first name was David Companion, you said?
Yes.
So that is the person.
So that's the primary scholarship and the alternate is?
Sam Repay.
Sam Repay.
Yes.
I put, can I use your?
Yes.
Pen or sort of put ALT on there? We know that's the alternate.
Okay.
That'll work, see?
Our system's working. Yeah, we're, we're okay. We're working. We're on the fly.
That's right.
Okay.
So Hast.
Hast.
Councilman Tyler, you want to reach through the screen and pull a name out of the envelope?
Draw for Hast. Okay, I'll draw.
Ah, okay.
Through the screen.
Yes. Okay, for Hast, it is Kaylee Gorham.
Okay, we get three and then one alternate. And we'll get another one.
And the alternate is?
Nope, we get three from.
No, Hast is showing one.
Only one.
Oh, one, okay, one, so this is the alternate.
Elias Reyes.
Okay.
The next one is Clark.
Anybody wish to pull for Clark?
Last time for Clark, you know, this is the last.
They get.
Anyone want to make history? The last time Clark will be called.
Okay. So Clark, there are three.
Is someone coming?
Anybody?
Last time Clark will be called.
Okay, so we have Anahai Braceno. Cesar Panetta. Moro de Jesus Hurtado.
One alternate.
Okay. And the alternate is Anthony Burgos.
The next we have is Gavitt.
President Whorple?
You're looking at me.
Gavitt.
Last time for Gavitt.
I graduated last in my class.
They say save the best for last.
Anything possible.
Okay, so we need three. Oh my.
Zalea Servantes.
Servantes, that's very good, thank you. And the next one is Luke Miller. Maya Strong. And the alternate is?
Rebecca Manning.
Rebecca Manning.
Okay. Thank you.
Next we have Hammond High.
And we have three names, Hammond High.
Last time for Hammond High?
Yes.
I'll pick, I used to be the principal, I used to be the principal of Hammond High.
Yes, you did.
Liliana Padilla. Tabriana Pickett. Sergio Moreno. Karina Padilla, who is Liliana's twin sister.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
Yeah, I have both of them.
Isn't that nice?
It's crazy.
Councilman Rakos, Morton.
Bring the clipboard back when you come.
Or, if you would please. Jamarian Evans.
That was my student too at Eggers.
Benjamin Chappie. Nazareth Diaz. And the alternate is Zachary Umar.
No, you're supposed to have four.
Uh, we have four and then, okay.
And they do an alternate.
Alrighty. Tamaia Metcalf is the alternate. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone's patience and thank you for, for muddling through this with us. And at the next meeting, the students will be asked to come and tell us a little bit about themselves and what they plan on doing with the rest of their life. Won't that be interesting? There we go, thank you so very much.
On behalf of the families and students of School City of Hammond, I'd like to thank you all.
Thank you. Has anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? Was that you, Councilwoman Alexander? Go ahead.
I do not have a COVID report asked for today due to the website being down, but I promise I will give those numbers to the residents as soon as it comes up. But of course, as always, I want to remind them to continue to mask up, wash their hands, and stay socially distanced as much as possible as we fight through COVID-19. I also had the opportunity to go by Wolf Lake and see the vaccines being given out there with Representative Andrade. And I want to thank him for bringing that out to us to make sure that can happen for the residents. As well as got a chance to stop through at Pulaski Park and plant a tree. That was an awesome experience. I challenge you all that when we get some tree planting, that you all also join and come plant trees somewhere throughout the city and our parks. Because the Student Conservation Association, they did an amazing job. And from what I understand, they will be coming out weekly to water those new trees for the next two to three years. That's something that, only for the trees that they planted. That is awesome, that those young people will continue to make sure those trees remain healthy as they grow. And one more thing, I know I'm talking a lot, is that we set a precedent throughout our council with language. If we were on live TV, we would be bleeping out words. That we just set a precedence and a standard of what should be done because we do have students that are watching. And it is important for them to take part in the legislative body and hearing the things that should happen. So I want to put that on the record, that we look out for what we're saying, how we're handling things because we. handling things, because we are leaders in our city.
Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I don't know if our Chief of Staff made this announcement or not, as I stepped out while he was speaking, but I did want to announce that Hammond Lodge Number Fifty-One Fraternal Order of Police will be hosting their annual fallen officers memorial service, that will be on May nineteenth at 5:00 PM at the Hammond Police Department. If, if anyone has the opportunity to attend this, please do, it's, it's really quite moving, and it's a testament to the job that all of our police officers do to serve and protect all of us. That's again, May nineteenth at 5:00 PM at the Hammond Police Department on Douglas Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I recently had the opportunity to attend two School City of Hammond events, the first being a meeting to kind of launch a planning committee for Hammond Central. It's open to community members, parents, students, whoever wants to come in and kind of share their, what they have as a vision for Hammond Central as Hammond High, Gavitt, and Clark combine. So the next meeting will take place on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at 5:30 PM, and that one will take place at Clark High School. Once again, that's Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at 5:30 PM at Clark High School for the Hammond Central Planning Meeting. Then I was also able to attend the School City of Hammond Strategic Planning Committee, so we had our first meeting last week, and our next one is going to be on Monday, seventeenth. That one is actually closed to the public, it's, it was by invite only, but I can tell you that we had a great conversation about some of the opportunities that currently exist within our school district and things that we will love to see improved upon, so excited to continue to meet with that group and hash out the next three to five years of what we want the School City of Hammond to look like, and the different opportunities that we would like for our students to, to be able to have access to. Just wanted to give that as an update, to let everybody know that the School City of Hammond is doing a great job of bringing people together to have these conversations, to plan out the future of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have any new and unfinished business?
All right, one more thing, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
This weekend was the last any baseball game with before schools, and I want to congratulate them on a job well done. I did get a chance to go out there and see them play, even as the weather got a little cold, so congratulations to, I believe, more than one I had left at the last portion, but they did a great job, Ryan did a great job with putting on the tournament with the schools. I wish we could have done it sooner than now, but hopefully, in the future, with the two schools, they can have almost like a crosstown classic between the two, like White Sox and the Cubs.
Thank you. Does there anyone else that has anything on the new and unfinished business? Anyone else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Councilwoman Alexander, just as a question I had, when you give your COVID reports, is there any way to know how many vaccines have been given out in the city, or don't they keep them numbers?
I will try to see if I can find it, but since the site is down, I don't know how many more updates they really did, but I will try to inquire to see how many people have been vaccinated within the city, and it can also be broken down by zip code as well, as we continue to fight through it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, we had Richard Barnes, but he left, he was the building owner, George.
George Stewart, Robertsdale. What was I gonna say, I forgot what I was gonna say first. Yeah, I hadn't driven by the park, Martin Luther King Park, it looks great, I must say. I don't know what the city's been doing to it, but that's a fine-looking park we got back here, I must say. I just wanted to say that I was duly impressed, it was nice to drive the distance off of Columbia. Anyway, and I was also sad to hear that St. Marguerite was closing, I spent a couple days up there back in the day, and, you know, it was, like you say, very convenient, and I got my COVID shots up there, so, that's gonna be sad to see go. In addition, with respect to the Boy Scout Road survey, I wasn't altogether clear enough, but that's not your fault, that's probably mine, as to, I wondered if Boy Scout Road was gonna remain closed going, I guess, north or maybe west off of Sheffield, if it is closed, I thought it was for a while, and that's always been a very nice and convenient shortcut, when you've gone to Pete's Grocer on the east side, and you just come up, ewing, and then, you know, shift over there, it's nice to get your gas, or whip around and get back into Hammond and shoot up Holman. Anyway, that's just my two cents. Also, given the winds, the authoritarian winds that seem to be buffeting America's democracy, I was wondering, and this is serious, I'm not just being flowery with the rhetoric, I think that the Zoom, the internet Zoom, what do you call it, connection, has been one of the silver linings in this COVID cloud that's descended on our nation, our, our city, and stuff like that, and I was wondering why it would even be considered, that there's a time limit on it, I just don't, I don't see that, because even if COVID's gonna be with us for, I don't know to what extent, but it seems to be, the degree's gonna be quite a bit severe for the next couple of years at any rate, so I don't know why they're putting a sunshine limit on that. Not only that, it promotes, and this may, I don't know, is it, I've become cynical lately, but I just wondered if it's, has become too democratic for this council? I mean, ideally, we'd like to have all the councilmen in the seats there, where we could, you know, alternately praise you and harass you if need be, but that's neither here nor there. But the Zoom has been a very, very convenient, and I wonder how many people watch it, but it's there, and I don't think it costs all that much. My concern is that ultimately, in the name, the hallowed name, I should say, of transparency that's touted here in the city, that someday, maybe, we could extend at least audio into the pre-meeting caucuses. Now, that would be democratic, but my hopes aren't too high for that. But nonetheless, I just wanted to raise that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, George. The only other person I see is Laurie. Laurie, do you wish to speak? Sir?
Thank you, no, I don't.
Okay, state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Adrian Palat. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to open up a business, but also, I wanted to say, I live on sixty-three Kenwood Street in between the Holman and State Line area, very beautiful neighborhood, very family-oriented, people out there, we walk our dogs, and walk our families and jog, and I can say first and foremost that the speeding in that neighborhood is a very big problem. We have very little crime in the neighborhood, but the cars coming through does make it an unsafe place, so I thank you guys for considering, taking a chance and closing that road for a minute to see how it works out, because it is a big, major problem for us in that neighborhood. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hearing nobody else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.